मुक्ता विद्रुमहे मनील अधवलच्छाये मुकैस्त्रीक्षणये युक्ता मिन्दोनि बद्धरत्नम कुटाम तत्पार्थ पर्णात्मिकाम गायत्रीम्बरदा भयांकुजकाजाम शुभ्रम कपालम कदाम शंखम चक्रम धारबिन्दयुगड़म हस्तेय वहंतीम पजी
श्री गुरु भयमहा, नमस्ते वेलकम टू पार्ट टू डी फाइनल सेशन ऑन ओमकारा इन डी लास्ट एपिसोड वे हैव स्टडीड अफ्यू थिंग्स ऑफ ओमकारा आईएस एक्सप्लेन्ड इन वर्सेस ड्रॉन फ्रॉम वैरियस उपनिष्ठ एंड बदवक गीता इन टुडे क्लास वे विल कंटिन्यू अम स्टडी ऑफ ओमकारा आईएस डिस्क्रिप्ट इन मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ आईएस आई सेड इन अवर लास्ट क्लास डी एंटायर मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ इस डेडिकेटेड तू ओमकारा डिसेक्टिंग डी मान्ट्रास ऑफ मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ रिक्वेस्ट एन इंडेक्स नॉलेज ऑफ डी सब्जेक्ट वे हैव अवर हाईली कॉम्पिटेंट टीचर्स इन डॉ. कोमल प्रसाद, डॉ. किरण, डॉ. दिवाकर, डॉ. सुंदर एंड एवोल्ड डॉ. हैक्टेसर हिमसेल्फ टू हेल्प अस अंडरस्टैंड ओमकारा फ्रॉम मांडुक्या पर्सपेक्टिव नाउ, डॉ. हैक्टेसर विल गिव अस डी प्रिल्यूड इन डी बैकग्राउंड तू डिस्पार्ट टू बिफोर अवर टीचर्स टेक ओवर, हैक्टेसर प्लीज
थैंक यू, विंटेश सदा शिव समारंभाम, शंकर छार्य मध्यमाम अस्मदा चार्य परियंताम, बंदे गुरु परम परम ओम आईएस इंट्रोड्यूस्ड अलरेडी, टुडे वे विल स्टडी डी मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ वेयर डेयर इस एन इनक्वायरी नॉट ओनली इनटू ओमकारा विच बिगिन्स इन डी फर्स्ट हाफ एंड डी सेकंड हाफ विल कनेक्ट डी ओमकारा इनक्वायरी इनटू आत्माविचार सो अल्टो डी वर्सेस बिगिन विथ ओमकारा इन डी बिगिनिंग डी फर्स्ट सेट ऑफ वर्सेस विल बी आत्माविचार डी नेक्स्ट सेट ऑफ वर्सेस विल बी ऑन ओमकाराविचार ओम नम प्रणवार्थाय शुद्ध ज्ञानेक मूर्तये निर्मलाय प्रशांताय दक्षिणामूर्तये नमः डेयर इस अफ्टरी फ्रॉम डी स्कंद पुराण व्हेन स्कंद सुभ्रमन्यम गेट अफ्लॉट ऑफ़ इनसाइट्स इनटू ओमकारा ही गोस तू डी क्रिएटर ब्रह्माजी एंड आस्क्स इन अबाउट डी मिस्ट्री ऑफ़ ओम एंड समहाव इस नॉट सेटिस्फाइड विथ डी आंसर ही गेट्स एंड फाइनली ही रिपोर्ट्स इट तू अस फादर एंड लॉड शिवा से व्हाट इस इट डेट यू नो? नाउ, ही से इफ आई हैव तू टीच यू यू हैव तू सिट डाउन एंड आई हैव तू बे योर टीचर, आई हैव तू सिट एट अन हायर पेडेस्टल कंपेयर तू यू लॉड शिवा वो इस कंप्लीटली इगोलेस, आई नॉट प्रॉब्लम बट गॉडेस पार्वती से नो वी पराब्रह्म परमात्मा, लॉड ऑफ़ डी यूनिवर्स कैन नॉट सिट डाउन एंड सो शी लुक फॉर अन कॉम्प्रिमाइज डी कॉम्प्रिमाइज वास तू कैरी सुभ्रमन्यम ऑन अस शोल्डर्स एंड ही कुड रिलेट तू हिस इनसाइट इन तू हिस ईयर्स एंड इन अस ईयर्स ही रिप्लाइड, ओम इस ब्रह्मा, ओम इस विष्णु, ओम इस महेशा सीइंग दिस, गॉडेस पार्वती कॉल्ड इन स्वामी नाथा डी वन हु इस डी स्वामी, वन हु इस डी टीचर फॉर डी नाथा, फॉर डी लॉड ऑफ़ डी वर्ल्ड इन टुडे कंक्रूडिंग पार्ट ऑफ़ डी स्टडी ऑफ़ ओमकारा इन डी गीता एंड डी उपनिष्ठ वे विल लुक इनटू डी मोस्ट वंडरफुल मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ विच बिलॉन्ग तू डी कथर्बा वेद डी वर्ड मांडुक्या मींस फ्रॉक, बिकॉज़ डिस उपनिष्ठ लीप्स फ्रॉम डी वेकिंग तू डी ड्रीम तू डी डीप स्लीप फ्रॉम आ, ऊ, ए, म इट इस डी स्मॉलेस्ट ऑफ़ ऑल डी उपनिष्ठ ओनली 12 वर्सेस एंड डेयरफुअर इन 12 वर्सेस, डी एसेंस ऑफ़ डी वेदांता कैन नॉट बी कम्युनिकेटेड एंड डेयरफुअर इट इस कॉल्ड अस सूत्र भूत उपनिष्ठ डेयर इस वन उपनिष्ठ कॉल्ड डी मुक्तिकोपनिष्ठ, डी मुक्तिकोपनिष्ठ डी टीचर इस भगवान राम, डी स्टूडेंट इस इस हनुमान, एंड डेयर वे हैव अफ्टरश्याम ऑन ऑल डी उपनिष्ठ, इट इस नाइस तू नो फ्रॉम श्री रामा अबाउट ऑल डी उपनिष्ठ एंड श्री रामा मेंन मेंशंस मांडुक्या एक एवा आलम मांडुक्या अलोन स्टडीइंग इस इनफॉर्म, एंड डेट इस डी ग्रेटनेस ऑफ़ डी उपनिष्ठ विच इस अफ्टरश्याम ऑफ़ एंड डीपर अंडरस्टैंडिंग ऑफ़ ओमकारा क्लब्ड विथ आत्माविचार आई डी उपनिष्ठ इस एक्सट्रीमली क्रिप्टिक, इट इस वेरी ब्रीफ गौडपादाचार्य एस इलेबरेटेड डी अंडरस्टैंडिंग फ्रॉम डी उपनिष्ठ इन फैक्ट डी सेवेंथ मान्ट्रा एस बीन एक्सटेंडेड इनटू अबाउट मोर अलमोस्ट 70 वर्सेस, व्हाट आर कॉल्ड कारिका बिकॉज़ डी आर इन पोएटिक फॉर्म, डी आर कॉल्ड कारिका एंड डिस इस अफ्टरीय थेटर ऑफ़ स्टडीइंग वेदांता थ्रू डी गौडपादा कारिका वेयर यू विल बी एबल तू अंडरस्टैंड व्हाय डिस वर्ल्ड इस नॉट सो रियल व्हाय डिस वर्ल्ड इस जस्ट लाइक ड्रीम, वेरी नाइसली एनालिस्ड इन टुडे क्लास वे विल स्टडी ब्रीफली ईच ऑफ़ डी वर्सेस ऑफ़ डी मांडुक्या बिगिनिंग विथ वर्स वन बाय डॉ. कोमल प्रसाद, डॉ. कोमल प्रसाद प्लीज
ओम श्री गुरु भयो नमः इन डी फर्स्ट टू मान्ट्रास ऑफ़ मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ टू टाइप्स ऑफ़ इनक्वेरीज आर इंट्रोड्यूस्ड, ओमकाराविचार डी अनालिसिस ऑफ़ ओम, डी सिलेबल ओम, एंड आत्माविचार अगेन डी होल ऑफ़ मांडुक्या प्रिंसिपली डील्स विथ ओमकारा एंड इन डी लास्ट मान्ट्रास 8-12, डिस इस फर्दर इलेबरेटेड मांडुक्या उपनिष्ठ इन डेट वेयर इस स्मॉलेस्ट ऑफ़ मेजर उपनिष्ठ विल स्टार्ट विथ मान्ट्रा नंबर वन ओम इत्येद दक्षरम इदम सर्वम, तस्योप व्याख्यानम भूतम भवद भविष्यदिति सर्वम ओमकार एवा अच्छन्यात् त्रिकालातितम, तदप्पी ओमकार एवा डी सिलेबल ओम इस ऑल डेट इस, नाउ फॉलोस अफ्लेयर एंड कंप्लीट एक्सपोजिशन ऑफ़ डी सिलेबल ऑल दिस बिलॉन्ग इन तू डी पास्ट, डी प्रेजेंट एंड डी फ्यूचर इस ओमकारो ओनली एंड अन्यथिंग एल्स, इफ डेयर इस अन्य, विच इस बियोन डी थ्री पीरियड्स ऑफ़ टाइम डेट्स अलसो ओमकार डी उपनिष्ठ से इस डी ओमकारा, डी वर्ड ऑफ़ सिलेबल ओम इस एवरीथिंग इन डी क्रिएशन, डेट अफ्लोन कॉम्प्रेहेंसिव अनालिसिस ऑफ़ ओमकारा इस गुड तू बी डेन डी उपनिष्ठ आईएस विल सीइंग डी नेक्स्ट स्लाइड व्हेन उपनिष्ठ से ओमकारा इट मींस एवरीथिंग, इट से ओम इस सर्वम एंड व्हेन इट से सर्वम, व्हाट इस मेंट बाय एवरीथिंग? उपनिष्ठ एक्सप्लेन्ड डेट एवरीथिंग विच इस बिलॉन्ग इन तू डी पास्ट, डी प्रेजेंट, डी फ्यूचर वेदर डेयर इनर्ट ऑब्जेक्ट्स ऑफ़ सेंशिएंट लिविंग बीइंग्स, डेयर ऑल नथिंग बट ओमकारा सो व्हाट फॉल्स विथ इन टाइम एंड व्हाट लाइस बियोन टाइम इस नथिंग बट ओमकारा सिंस ओमकारा इस विथ इन टाइम एंड बियोन टाइम, बाय अनालिसिंग ओमकारा वे आर अनालिसिंग एवरीथिंग सो ओमकारा इस प्रिशियस सिलेबल डेट अन्डरस्टैंड ओमकारा इस डेफिनेशन, विच इनक्लूड्स एवरीथिंग सो इट्स अफ्लोकेट इन विच वे विल पुट एवरीथिंग तू मीन एवरीथिंग बिकॉज़ अवर इनक्वेरी इस तू नो अवर ओनसेल्स, डिसकवरिंग अवरसेल्स थ्रू डिसकवरिंग डी मीनिंग ऑफ़ डी यूनिवर्स विच वे आर स्टेइंग इन इन फैक्ट वे आर लुकिंग फॉर अफ्टीरिया ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग सो वे नीड अफ्लॉट तू डिनोट एवरीथिंग, एंड ओमकारा इस डेफिनेशन इट्स नॉट इजी तू ग्रास्ट डी मीनिंग ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग एवरीथिंग मींस एवरीथिंग, इन फैक्ट इन इंग्लिश डी वर्ड एवरीथिंग केम ओनली इन 13th सेंचुरी सो इट इस रिक्वेस्ट सम मेंटल एक्सरसाइज तू कॉम्प्रिहेंट डी मीनिंग ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग लिविंग, नॉनलिविंग, मोंटेस्ट, बिल्डिंग्स, ट्रीज, अनिमल्स, अवर बॉडीज, माइंड, थॉट्स, इमोशंस, एवरीथिंग पैरेलल यूनिवर्स, यस, डेट्स अफ्टर डेट्स अलसो इनक्लूडेड इन डी डेफिनेशन, नॉट जस्ट ऑफ़ टुडे बट ऑल ऑफ़ डेट विच वास इन डी पास्ट, विच इस इन डी प्रेजेंट, विच में कम इन डी फ्यूचर पुट एवरीथिंग इन टू वन टर्म त्रिकालातिता, कांसेप्चुअलाइज़ सच एन एवरीथिंग, कॉल इट ओम, ओमकारा सच ओमकारा इस नेसेसरी फॉर अवर अनालिसिस ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग, डेट्स डी एक्सरसाइज इन फ्रंट ऑफ़ अस फॉर डी टीरिया एवरीथिंग डेट्स वे ओमकाराविचार इस इंपॉर्टेंट वन एनालजी विल टेक, डी नेक्स्ट स्लाइड वे सी एन आइस होटल आइस होटल इस अफ्टररी होटल मेड ऑफ़ स्नो, डी स्कल्प्टेड ब्लॉक्स ऑफ़ आइस इवन डी कॉन्क्रेट, डी सीमेंट इन बिटवीन इस मेड ऑफ़ डी मिक्सचर ऑफ़ स्नो एंड आइस फॉर वांट ऑफ़ अटर्न डी कॉल इट्स नाइस डेट्स सीज़नल अफ्टररी होटल्स इन कोल्ड कंट्रीज लाइक कनेडा, स्वीडन, फिन्लैंड, इट्स अफ्टररी अट्रैक्शन लॉब्बीज इनसाइड ऑफ़ फील्ड विथ आइस स्कल्प्चर्स, फूड डी स्पेशली चूज़न ब्लास्सेस आर मेड ऑफ़ आइस, पीपल सिट ऑन बेंचेस मेड ऑफ़ आइस कस्टमर्स मस्त बीट प्रिपेयर तू स्लीप इन बेड्स मेड ऑफ़ स्नो आर आइस वाल्स, फिक्शर्स, फिटिंग्स, एवरीथिंग इस आइस और कॉम्पैक्टेड स्नो इन सच एन आइस होटल, वे नो एवरीथिंग इस मेड ऑफ़ ऑफ़ आइस, एवरीथिंग इस आइस स्टिल फॉर ट्रांसैक्शनल पर्पोज़स, वे से टेबल, चेयर, कॉर्ड, बेड, ब्लास्स, ऑल मेड ऑफ़ आइस बट इट्स कॉल्ड यूजिंग डिफरेंट वर्ड्स तू डिनोट डेम फॉर डे टू डे ट्रांसैक्शंस सो इन सच एन आइस होटल, ऑल ऑब्जेक्ट्स आर जस्ट आइस, डेट डू नॉट एक्जिस्ट ऑन डेट ओन डी टेंपरली एक्जिस्ट ओनली बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी वर्ड्स डेट डिनोट डेम व्हाट एक्जिस्ट इस ओनली आइस उपनिष्ठ से डेट ऑल ऑब्जेक्ट्स आर जस्ट ब्रह्मण डेट डू नॉट एक्जिस्ट ऑन डेट ओन डेट एक्जिट ओनली बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी वर्ड्स वे यूज़ तू डिनोट डेम ऑल सच वर्ड्स, ऑल सच वर्ड्स अवेलेबल एंड पॉसिबल आर पुट टुगेदर एंड डिनोटेड बाय टर्म ओमकारा, डी प्रणव, डी प्राइमोरियल सिंबल फ्रॉम विच ऑल डी वर्ड्स आर जेनरेटेड इट्स वेरी इंटेंस एंड माइंड बॉगली, माइंड बॉगलिंग इनक्वेरी इन डी नेचर ऑफ़ सेल्फ एंड डी नेचर ऑफ़ यूनिवर्स, डेट्स अफ्टर ओमकारा, इंट्रोडक्शन तू ओमकारा
थैंक यू डॉ. कोमल नाइस स्लाइड्स एंड नाइस एक्सांपल्स तू से डेट हो ओमकारा इनक्लूड्स एवरीथिंग नॉट ओनली एवरीथिंग डेट वे कैन एक्सपीरियंस, एवरीथिंग डेट वास डेयर इन डी पास्ट, डी प्रेजेंट एवरीथिंग डेट कैन पॉसिबली बी डेयर एंड समथिंग डेट इस बियोन टाइम एंड बियोन अन्यथिंग डेट वे कैन अंडरस्टैंड सो वे हैव तू थिंक ऑफ़ समथिंग डेट इस ऑल इनक्रूसिव एंड डी ओनली थिंग डेट कैन बी इस समथिंग आई मीन डेट इस इनफाइनेट, लिमिटलेस डी नेक्स्ट वर्स विल बी एक्सप्लेन बाय डॉ. किरण, डॉ. किरण प्लीज
नमस्ते, हरि ओम, गुरु भयो नमः स्वर्वगम एतत ब्रह्म, आयमात्मा ब्रह्म, सोयमात्मा चतुष्पात ऑल दिस इस इनडीड ब्रह्म, डिस इस, डिस आत्मा इस ब्रह्म डिस आत्मा इस फोर फैसेट्स प्रीवियसली वे स्टडीड, ओम इस इक्वल तू सर्वम और एवरीथिंग एंड हेयर वे कंटिन्यूस, सर्वम इस इक्वल तू ब्रह्म ब्रह्मन इस इक्वल तू आत्म, सो इनक्वायरिंग ऑन आत्मा इस इक्वल एंड तू इनक्वायरिंग ऑन ब्रह्म डेट इस ए इक्वल तू बी, बी इस इक्वल तू सी, सी इस इक्वल तू डी, सो ए इक्वल तू डी सो इनक्वायरिंग ऑन आत्मा इस इनक्वायरिंग ऑन सेल्फ व्हाट इस डिस आयमात्मा, लेट अस स्टडी फर्दर डिस इस वन ऑफ़ डी प्रिंसिपल महावाक्या, एंड टीचर से डिस इस वन ऑफ़ डी वेरी इंपॉर्ट वन बिकॉज़ इन ऑल अदर उपनिष्ठ डी फर्स्ट लेसन इस टॉट डी ब्रह्मन इस डी क्रिएटर, डी वर्ल्ड इस क्रिएटेड जस्ट लाइक अफ्ट एंड डी क्ले एंड एंस डी फॉट इस मित्या रिलेटिव एक्सिस्टेंस बट इन मांडुक्या, हेयर इट से वर्ल्ड इस मित्या बिकॉज़ इट इस ऑब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ एक्सपीरियंस इमेजिन, डी वर्ल्ड इस अनरियल और मित्या बिकॉज़ आई एम सीइंग इट, आई एम एक्सपीरियंसिंग इट एंड ओनली आई, डी रियल आई इस सत्यम, एंड व्हाट इस डी सत्यम, लेट अस स्टडी फर्दर बिफोर डेट, लेट अस स्टडी थ्री इंपॉर्टेंट थिंग डेट इस प्रमयम, प्रमाणा एंड प्रमाता, डेट इस डी ट्रिपोटी तू नो अन्यथिंग, इफ वे वांट तू नो समथिंग, डेट ऑब्जेक्ट इस कॉल्ड प्रमय, प्रमयम एंड वे यूज़ अफ्टरथिंग, डेट टूल विच वे यूज़ तू सी इस कॉल्ड प्रमाणा एंड डी पर्सन वो इस सी इस कॉल्ड प्रमा, प्रमाता सो, आई यूज़ टेलिस्कोप तू सी डिस हाउस एंड तू सी क्लोज बाय बिफोर डेट, आई विल नो डेट व्हाट इस डी यूज़ ऑफ़ टेलिस्कोप सो डी टेलिस्कोप विच आई यूज़ आस डी टूल, आई हैव तू नो बिफोर व्हाट इस डी यूटिलिटी सो डेट आस बिकम एन ऑब्जेक्ट, आई आर बिकम सम टाइम बिफोर सो इन शॉर्ट, डेयर ओनली टू थिंग्स, वन इस प्रमाता डी नोर एंड प्रमयम डी ऑब्जेक्ट बट आई, डी नोर इस अलसो रिलेटिव डेट इस डी रियल आई कन्फर्स डी नोर एक्सिस्टेंस बिकॉज़ आई एम नोइंग, आई एम नो फॉर एक्सांपल, आई एम अन डांसर बिकॉज़ आई एम डांसिंग आई एम अन वाइफ, आई एम अन हस्बैंड बिकॉज़ वाइफ इस डेयर सो, एवरीथिंग एल्स इस डेयर इस बोरोड फ्रॉम आई डी आई प्रमाता बोरोस फ्रॉम आई एंड डेन डोनेट्स इट तू प्रमयम सो इन शॉर्ट, डेयर इस ओनली रियल आई एंड रेस्ट ऑफ़ इट इस ऑल रिलेटिव लेट अस स्टडी फर्दर, व्हाट इस डिस आई और डी रियल आई मींस इमेजिन, व्हाट वे आर सीइंग लिटिल डॉट्स ए टू डाइमेंशनल अनिमल लाइक अन वर्म्स इस ओनली डी डॉट्स ऑन डिस पेपर नेक्स्ट आज यू गो फर्दर, डिस, डिस इस अफ्टर एस्प्रिंग विच इस मेक्स डीज़ होल्स सो डी पर्सन वो इस अफ्टर डाइमेंशनल, यू पर्सन लाइक अन ह्यूमन बीइंग सीइस डिस एस्प्रिंग वेयर एस डी टू डाइमेंशनल अनिमल्स इस ओनली डी होल्स मेड बाय एस्प्रिंग इन शॉर्ट, इफ व्हाट आई एम सीइंग आस मी, यू एंड डिस वर्ल्ड अन सपरेट थिंग इफ आई वेक अप तू डिस फोर्थ स्टेट कॉल्ड तुरियम डेन ऑल डीज़ थिंग्स आई सी आस इंटरकनेक्टेड एंड वन बीइंग डेट इस, डेट इस नॉट डिफरेंस बिटवीन टाइम एंड स्पेस एंड डेट इस नॉट डिफरेंस बिटवीन मी एंड यू, डेट इस व्हाट कोमल प्रीवियसली रिफर्ड तू अस एवरीथिंग डी थिंग्स एंड डी स्पेस एंड डी टाइम रिजल्ट्स इन डी वन थिंग विच इस कॉल्ड अस तुरिया व्हाट इस डिस तुरिया, वे ऑल नो, वे लिव इन थ्री स्टेट्स इन वेकर स्टेट, आई यूज़ डिस बॉडी आस प्रमाणा एंड एक्सपीरियंस डिस ऑल वर्ल्ड वेयर एस इन ड्रीम स्टेट, आई यूज़ डी सत्ल बॉडी आर सुक्षम शरीर तू एक्सपीरियंस व्हाट इस कॉल्ड अस ड्रीम वर्ल्ड एंड इन डीप स्लीप, आई यूज़ कारण टूल और इग्नोरेंस इट्सेल्फ आस टूल तू एक्सपीरियंस सुशुक्ति और तू एक्सपीरियंस व्हाट इस कॉल्ड अस नथिंग बट एंड व्हेन आई वेक अप, आई एम नॉट डी डिफरेंट पर्सन, आई एम डी सेम पर्सन सो व्हास डिस थ्रेड विच इस मेड ऑल डीज़ पर्ल्स आस वन बीइंग डेट इस स्टेट इस कॉल्ड डी तुरिया और डी फोर्थ स्टेट नाउ, लेट अस टेक अनदर एक्सांपल डिस क्यूब आस कम इन डी एक्सिस्टेंस बिकॉज़ आई आर सीइंग इट एंड आई आर शोन इट तू यू सो मी एंड यू आर गिवन डी नोन स्टेटस तू डिस एंड नोर स्टेटस तू मी सो बिकॉज़ इफ आई फॉर एक्सांपल, मी एंड यू आर नॉट सीइंग डिस क्यूब और नोबडी सीइंग डी क्यू
Trying to explain something very complicated. This is Mandukya. And that is why Mandukya is introduced only after a thorough study of all the other Upanishads. The first Upanishad said, everything is Om. This Upanishad, this second verse says, everything is Brahman. That means Om and Brahman are one and the same. The next statement says, I am Atma Brahman. That means the one who is observing that consciousness in me because I have been able to speak, that because of which you are able to hear, is none other than Brahman. So you have an equation here. Everything is Om, everything is Brahman. I am Om, I am Brahman. Now, this I can be divided for transactional purposes into waking, dream and deep sleep. But there is something called the Thuriya that is in and through. We will study that in the next presentation by Dr. Sundar. Dr. Sundar, please.
Shri Guru Bhuvanamaha. This Upanishad is very compact and comprehensive. The initial two verses were introductory. The next ten verses elaborate on the two verses. First word said, the name of everything past, present and future is Om. Second verse said, the substance, everything past, present and future is Brahman, is Aatman, our true essence. First verse, Umkara, Vichara is going to be elaborated in the verses eight to twelve. While the second verse, which is Aatma, Vichara, is going to be elaborated in this set of verses. The last quarter of the second verse said, Soyam Atma Chatuspat, that Aatma has got four quarters. But we have been taught that the reality is Ekam, Advitiyam, Khudvaitam, Kayvalyam. How come there are four parts to this? To understand this, as well as the next section, Pujya Swami Paramathananda ji gives a beautiful background. So it starts with the question, what is unique about the Mandukya Upanishad? Most other Upanishads arrive at the Tatparryam, the central teaching, Brahma Satyam Jagannamitya, by taking to Adhyaropa Apavada Prakriya, by exploring Karana, Karya, Sammantha, the relation between cause and effect. In this next slide, when we say that there is a cause-effect relationship, as in this slide, between clay and pot, it is true to say that the Karana, the cause, or the clay alone is, the Karya, the effect, or the pot is as good as not there. This is because if you remove the clay from the pot, nothing remains. So although the pot has got experienceability, utility, transactability, it is as good as not there, it is Mitya. So the Upanishads say that Brahman is Karanam and Jagat is Karya. Therefore, through the same methodology, they establish that Jagat is Mitya and Brahman is Satyam. When we come to the Mandukya, as we see in this next slide, there is a slightly different Prakriya that is adopted to arrive at the same Tatparryam. The methodology explored is the relationship between the seer and the scene. This is the Drik Dhrisha Sammantha. What is this? Let us see in this next slide. Our understanding can be developed thus in these three statements. Existence of any object in this universe presupposes knowability. If there is no knowability, then that object is not there. An example given is the rabbit's horn in the Vedanta. The second statement is, knowability itself presupposes a knower. Third statement is, knower itself presupposes a sentient principle. What the Upanishad does is, it groups the knower and the known, which don't have an independent existence, because both of them presuppose a sentient principle, which is consciousness or Brahman or Aatman. This Upanishads group this Mitya portions as Jagat and the Satyam, on which the knower and known both depend as Brahman. So as you can see, the knower and known includes everything in this material universe that has been shown as Mitya and Brahman alone is Satyam. In this next slide, another unique thing about this Upanishad is to describe the Jagat in three mutually exclusive compartments, which are the wakeful state, the dream state and the deep sleep state. In each of these, you can see the Jagat in these pairs as knower and known. We can thus make three profound statements. I can say that I, the singular Satyam in this entire universe, function in the Jagrat Avastha by making use of Mitya, Sthula, Namaruwa and become knower and known. The pair in the wakeful universe is called Vishva Virat. I can also make another profound statement. I, as consciousness, the only Satyam in this universe, function through the Swapna Avastha by making use of the Mitya Sukshma Namaruwa and become the knower and the known in the dream state, which are given the names Taijasa and Hiranyagarba. So I can also make this third profound statement. I am consciousness, the only Satyam in this entire universe. I function in the Sushukti Avastha by making use of the Mitya Karana Namaruwa and become the knower and known, the pair in the deep sleep state, which have got the names Prajna and Ishvara. The importance of this understanding is, as we can see in the next slide, this clear understanding makes me abide in this fact that I am immanent through the material universe in all the three states. I am inescapably intimate to the knower and known in all the three states. Yet, I am transcendent because in all these three states, the knower and known cannot affect me in any manner whatsoever because they are Mitya and I alone am Satyam. This understanding leads to Moksha. Not having this understanding, that is non-appreciation of this consciousness, which is the Thuriya, which is in and through the other three states, results in Adhyasa, or I give a reality to what is Mitya and then I suffer Samsara, being the knower and known in all the three states. Thus, as we see in this next slide, these set of verses describe the Pratmapada as Vishva Virat, Dvityapada as Taijasa Hiranyagarba and Trityapada as Prajna Ishvara. All of these are Mitya. There is singularity alone, there is one Satyam alone. That Brahman alone, consciousness alone is in the guise of this three-cross-two table. I have three-cross-two relational names with reference to the Mitya material universe. With reference to Satyam, I am in the form of non-dual Brahman. So this same thing is explained in the verses three to six. I will not go word to word for want of time. In this next slide, verse three describes the Pratmapada, which is the field of the wakeful universe, when one's consciousness is outwardly oriented. This is described as having seven limbs, nineteen facets, and he is the enjoyer of the grass. When we go to the next slide, here is described the Dvityapada, which is the field of the dream universe, where one's consciousness is inwardly turned and one is the experiencer of the subtle. The next two verses, five and six, deal with the Trityapada. So this describes its distinctness from the Pratmapada, where one does not have any desires for the external objects. Its distinctness, mutually exclusive compartment, which I described earlier, from the Swapna Avastha because one does not have any dreams. One has a knowledge of an undifferentiated mass of consciousness and one is the enjoyer of the causal, which is called Ananda. And in this last verse of this section, which further describes the Trityapada, describes one as the lord of all, the all-knowing, the indweller in which there is existence and resolution of everything, because now it is in the form of a causal universe. The next slide describes the three-cross-two table, which will be explained in more detail by Divakar.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sundar. That was an absolute brilliant explanation of verses three, four, five and six. This is what makes Mandukya a challenge. But all students of Vedanta have at some stage to come to Mandukya. And as you rightly pointed out, the uniqueness of this Upanishad is the focus on Drik Dhrisha Viveka or the experiencer and the experienced. There is one hypothesis which Swamiji insists again and again. And that is, to prove the existence of anything in the world, to say if something is existent, it needs to be verified by some conscious individual. For example, if I say there are three horns on my head, but this cannot be verified by anybody at any time, would you believe it? You cannot believe it. Now, to prove something is existent, it requires a conscious person to say something is existent. Now, if you understand the gravity of this statement, it means anything existent or existence is dependent on consciousness. Now, this is a great jump in understanding. And that is why you will see whatever I see and experience is of a lower order compared to the one who is seeing. Now, the one who is seeing also can be divided into two. Now, because I am seeing through my eyes and through my mind, in my waking state, I become a limited experiencer. And this limited experiencer is what Dr. Kiran described as Pramata. That limited experience Pramata is supported by consciousness. So there is a Pramata in my waking state and there is also a Pramata in my dream state. Now Vedanta uses dream to help you to understand and if you understand this example, you understand Vedanta. In dream, I am the creator of a dream world. I not only create a dream world, I create a dream body for myself. And then you will see there is an interaction between this dream body of mine, who is an experiencer of the dream world. But you will remember, or you will know for sure, that the experienced world and the experiencer in the dream, called Hiranyagarba and the Taijasa, are none other than me, myself, who has split into an experiencer and the experienced, so too in the deep sleep. Now, if you are able to understand this, you will realize that I slowly move from the experienced dream world or the experienced waking world to the limited Pramata in the waker in the dream. And finally, I come to consciousness. That consciousness is explained in this beautiful verse, in the this verse, which we have to remember. I will chant this verse because this verse has to be remembered. Nanthak Pragnyamna Bahish Pragnyamna Ubayata Pragnyamna Pragnyana Ghana Pragnyamna Appragnyan. Adrishyam Avvybaharyam Aggrahim Alakshanam Achintyam Avyopadesham Ek Atma Praktaya Sarum Prapancho Pasamam Shantam Shivam Advaitam Chaturtam Mannyantesa Atmasa Vigneyaha. Now, this is the conclusion of the Aatma Vichara, that there are three Pramatas. There is a three experiencers in the waking, dream and deep sleep called Vishwa, Taijasa and Prajna. But all of them are supported by consciousness or Aatma. Aatma is the experiencer in the waking, the experiencer in the dream, the experiencer of the dream's sleep state. In all the three things, I am the waker, I am the dreamer, I am the sleeper. Swamiji helps us to focus on, I am. I am is the infinite aspect. The moment I become something, I have become limited. This I am, which is in and through all the states, is the Thuriyam or the Aatma or the pure consciousness. Now, let us try to understand how the Upanishad is trying to explain who is this real I am by trying to negate the pairs of experiencer and experienced in waking, dream and deep sleep state. So in all the three states, we have what is called a, we have a Pramata in the waking, dream and deep sleep. There is the Prameyam, the experienced world. And so finally, I will negate both the Pramata and the Prameyam in the first two parts of this verse. And finally, the verse comes to explain what is the actual description of Brahman. So the verse goes like this. Na Bahish Pragnyam, I am not the waker. I, I am trying to exclude, I, the Thuriyam, is not the waker. I, I am beyond it. I am not the experiencer of the dream. I am not the sleeper also. Neither am I, na Ubayata Pragnyam. I am none of these intermediate states. I am not even the knower of all, nor I am Appragnyam, the inert principle. Then, so what we have done is, we have negated the three Pramatas. Then, who am I? I am the Apprameyam, that which can never be an object of experience. An object of experience cannot be, as a sarva pramana agocharam. So it cannot be accessed by any of the sense organs or even the mind. And therefore, I, I am Adrishyam, Aggrahim. That means I cannot be accessed or grasped by any of the organs of action. Alakshanam, I do not have any indicators. Even the mind, it is beyond the mind to conceive about it. Now, here is something where I cannot describe. Now, we have a problem. We have a problem about what is this thing called Brahman? Brahman is not something that can be compared to anything else that we can experience. And that is why the teachers who have Brahma Vidya have to use common worldly language and they have a lot of difficulty. And yet, like Sri Dakshina Murthy, have an ability to communicate that which cannot be communicated. Now, one method of trying to understand what is this Brahman is through apparent attributes or through unreal attributes. Now, we will say Brahman is the Sakshi, that which is the one which is the witness of the universe. Second is, I am enlivened. There is an enlivening principle. What, what is this enlivening principle? That consciousness which enlivens me. Although this is an incidental attribute, that is a second method of saying to introduce Brahman as I am conscious, what is that which makes me conscious? What is that because of which I am able to experience this world? And these are the two methods. Another method is, sometimes you have a series of cups, all of them filled with different liquids. But there is one cup which does not have anything. So if you want to describe Nirguna, everything in this world that I know has attributes. And if I have to train somebody to tell what is Brahman, that which has no attributes, that is Brahman. Finally, teachers have a method of talking indirectly. That is why more than through words, we need to be able to be sensitive. For instance, when the, when a father is talking about his two children and he says one of them is brilliant, the other fellow gets an idea that my father thinks I am not so brilliant. So there are indirect ways of talking. And also, sometimes the teacher uses silence in a particular way. And through silence, the student is able to get. Now, now we come to that positive way where the teacher is trying to tell what is Brahman. Brahman is Ek Atma Praktaya Sarum. That which is there in and through all states of experience. That which is there in the waking, that which is there in the dream, that which is there in the deep sleep state. That is, that which is there when I was small, when I would become middle age, when I have come to old age. In and through my aging process, my body has undergone changes, my thoughts have changed, my ideas have changed. But there is something that is common in and through, that is Ek Atma Praktaya Sarum. Then there is a very powerful word called Prapancho Pasamam. Prapancho Pasamam will be that which is of a higher order of reality and therefore you will be able to see this world is of a lower order of reality. Now, how does the Upanishads negate anything? Now, what can you negate? You cannot negate anything that is existent, something that is there cannot be negated. You cannot negate something that is not existent because there is no need to negate. Then what do you negate? You have to negate something that can be experienced, but it is not really there. For example, a mirage. A mirage or a rainbow is something that I can experience, but it is not really there. And the Upanishads try to tell us that this world that I experience is like a dream world, which I can experience, but it is not really there. And that is what is called Prapancho Pasamam. So Prapancho Pasamam means that the world is experientially available. You can, it is of utility, it can be transacted. But then, it is of a lower order of reality because it is dependent upon me for its own existence. And therefore, the whole mantra says, the higher order of reality is that consciousness which is experiencing all the world. And that is why they use the word Dikthata, which also means Mitya. Then there is the word, this, these two words, Prapancho Pasamam and Advaitam, are elaborated in about thirty-eight karikas by Gautapada Chariv. So Advaitam, that means there is no other. Chaturtam Mannyantey, many people call it the fourth. But it is not really the fourth because it is in and through the waking, dream and deep sleep state. Shantam Shivam. It is Shivam means it is auspicious, Shantam, it is that which cannot be disturbed. It is of the nature of peace. Chaturtam Mannyantesa Atmasa Vigneyaha. So this is one of the most glorious descriptions of Thuriyam or Aatma or Brahman, which we need to understand. We will now go to a shift now. The whole Upanishad now comes to a shift where Umkara Vichara is evaluated. We'd have the three padas and how the three padas correlate to the waking, dream and deep sleep state. And that will be done for us by Dr. Gautam Divakar. Dr. Divakar, please.
Thank you, sir. Om Shri Guru Bhuvanamaha. In the next slide, we see that is already explained before. Mandukya Upanishad teaches two Prakriyas for self-inquiry. The first is the Chatuspada Aatma Vichara, which we saw till the verse seven. And the second is the Omkar Vichara. In the next slide, we see that the Chatuspada Aatma Vichara, it is revealed that the Aatma has four padas or quarters, of which three are relative and one is the absolute. The relative states of existence are Vishwa in the Jagrat Avastha, Taijasa in the Swapna Avastha and Pragna in the Sushukti Avastha. The fourth Thuriya is the absolute state, which is in and through the other relative states. As told by Dr. Sundar and beautifully told by one of the commentators, that it is indeed the Aatma playing the mischief and wearing the costumes of Vishwa, Taijasa and Pragna and appears as a different states. So the costumes conceal the real person, who is none other than the Aatma, which is mine as well as all of yours' real identity. Next slide, please. The second Prakriya, Omkar Vichara, is taught from the verses eight to twelve. Mandukya Upanishad is the most quoted Upanishad when it comes to the analysis of Omkar. It declares that Omkar is indeed Aatma and Omkar is everything. Contemplation on Aatma using Omkar can be done at three levels, depending on what stage of spiritual sadhana vyarad. The first one is Omkar as a pratika of Aatma, taking Omkar as Ekarupa Ishvara and meditating as a representative of the Aatma. The second level is talking about syllables of Omkar and comparing that to the Chatuspada Aatma and meditating on it. This is similar to the Anekarupa or Vishwarupa Ishvara. These two levels are meditating on the Saguna Ishvara through the Saguna forms of the Om, which is the letters and the sound of the Omkar. The level three is the highest form, where Om is seen as the very Aatma itself and using it for the Vedantic Nidhyasana. This meditation on the substratum or the Adhisthannam can be seen as Arupa Ishvara Nidhyasana. Meditation on the substratum is called as Pravila Apna Dhyanam. This is meditating on the Nirguna Ishvara through the so-called a Nirguna aspect of the Om, which is beyond all the sounds. Let's look at the verse eight. Soyam Atma Adyaksharam Omkaraha. Adhimatram Padamaatraha Matraschapadaha Akara Ukaram Akaraithi. Upanishad brings out the parallels, connections between the Chatuspada Aatma and the Omkar. The sound aspect of the whole word Om, as well as its three syllables are emphasized. In the next slide, we see the word Om has three syllables, A, U and M. Or in English, A, U and M. While pronouncing A and U will become O and this is followed by half letter Ma, which is M. Therefore, it becomes Om and not Aun. So we should not call it as AUM, we should not pronounce it as AUM. In sound terminology, these syllables are called as Matras. Matra is the specific duration for chanting of the each syllable. The next slide, we see the meaning of this verse. Sahayam Atma Adyaksharam Omkaraha. Aatma is the overlord of this imperishable Akshara Om. So the composite entity of Chatuspada, the four quarters, is compared to the whole word Om. Adhimatram, if taken as separate syllables, matra by dismantling Omkar, Aatma is the lord of that also. Padamaatraha Matraschapadaha. Each pada is equated to each matra and vice versa. Akara Ukaram Akaraithi, Aun and M of Omkar is corresponded to the each pada of the Chatuspada Aatma. The next slide, we see Om symbolically encompasses all scriptures and sounds of Paravidya and Aparavidya. As we open our mouth using Akara while we are chanting the Om and we close our mouth using Makara, which means all the letters and sounds has to come in between these two only. So in the next slide, we see the next four verses are describing the connections between each pada and the matras of the Omkar. In the verse nine, Amatra, which is syllable A, is compared to the Jagrat Avastha, the wakeful stage, state, which is called as Vishwa at the Vesti or microcosmic level and is called as Virat at the Samasthi macrocosm level. A is compared to Jagrat Avastha because A is the first syllable representing the beginning of our Avastha Trayam from the wakeful state. It is indeed a very, very important state as all other states are contemplated, including the Thuriyam can be contemplated and comprehended only during this wakeful stage, state or the Jagrat Avastha. Upanishad lures by saying that Vishwa or Vaishwanar Upasana, which is the meditating on A matra, will result in the seeker attaining all the worldly desires. In the next slide, we see the verse ten, which talks about U matra or letter U in Omkar and says it corresponds to the Swapna Avastha, the dream state. This is called as Taijasa at a microcosmic level and Hiranyagarba at a macrocosmic level. This comparison is because U is the middle This comparison is because who is the middle syllable of Omkar? And so is the Swapna Avasta, which is the middle of the Avastatraham. One who meditates on this Ukara. Uh will gain the Brahma Vidya and Upanishad says that none in his or her lineage remains ignorant. In the verse eleven, Upanishad talks about Makara. Ma matra, which is compared to the Sushukti or the deep sleep state. And that is called as Pragna at the microcosmic level and Ishvara or Anteryami at the macrocosmic level. Just like how the Jagrad and Swapna Avasta merges into the Sushukti Avasta. A and U matra of Omkar merges into the Ma matra when we chant the Omkar. The word Mithe is used in this verse which means measures. Wa Apite means that uh in, in it, all the states merge and get absorbed. And then it comes out of it, just like a rice measuring bowl takes in and absorbs all the rice. Uh and from that only the measured rice comes out. One who contemplates on this Makara representing Sushukti will know the real nature of the world. As well as the real nature of one's own self, that is Atmagnan. The next slide we see, when the Upanishad promises us with all this palam or. Uh for meditating on these each syllable of Omkar. It is only encouraging us to make our mind more subtler. By using this Avastatraya Prakriya and proceed towards the absolute subtle state of Thurya. Using these relative states, uh starting from the Jagrat Avasta, which is the grossest. And not get stuck with these finite results. Next slide, sir. Upanishad had promised equating four quarters of the Atma to Omkar. We have completed three relative states of Atma, that is A, U and Makara. What about Thurya, which is the fourth pada? How does this correspond to Omkar? This is explained in the most important twelfth verse. Thurya is compared to Amatra Omkar. Next slide, sir. Amatra is a silence which follows after chanting of the Omkar. Normally, while chanting Omkar, we are busy focusing and catching our breath after a chant of Omkar. When we know the significance of the silence, then we will give a short pause after inhaling and exhaling before starting another Omkar. Om has A, U and Ma matra as well as Amatra. This soundless state which comes after and before the sounds of Omkar. Represents Sachidananda Atma or Thurya. On a deeper contemplation, we have to realize that this silence is not just the absence of the sounds. But it is that absolute silence upon which all the noises appear and disappear. It is the very awareness principle of this absolute silence. So, the silence is always there as Adhistanam, the substratum. But it is the sounds which conceals this. Silence itself is so subtle, just like the space, that we need the noises as a lead. And then wait for the noises to disappear so that we can observe the silence. So we have to use the sounds of A, U and Ma matra and then become aware of the silence which comes after. A very subtle mind can appreciate the silence even when there is a lot of noise. That is the state that we all should be aiming for. Silence is the pure consciousness, which is Brahman. The very same silence uh is the means used to arrive at the goal, which is the silence again. We know that the Adiguru Dakshina, Dakshina Murthy uses Mounam, the silence as teaching method. To teach Brahma Vidya using Chin Mudra. We also have great, great masters like Ramana Maharshi. Who taught more through the silence. In the next slide, we see. Indeed, talking about silence itself is the biggest irony. Swami Sarvapriyananda narrates the story of Bodhisattvas to explain the silence. Once in a congregation of Bodhisattvas, who are the realized Buddhist monks. Each Bodhisattva was explaining about their knowledge on enlightenment. Last but one speaker was the greatest Bodhisattva called Manjushri. A realized monk who says that silence is the enlightenment. Everyone was so delighted about this. Then comes Himalakirti, who comes and just stands there still, he doesn't utter a single word. Because talking even a single sentence or a single word about silence itself defeats the very purpose of the silence. In the next slide, we see the absolute silence representing fourth pada Thurya. Which is the imminent and transcendental Atma is Auvyabharyah. Beyond all the conventional transactions, Prapancho Pasamah. It is this state where all the manifested and unmanifested world ceases to exist. This Amatra is Shivaha blissful, blissful and is very auspicious. It is Advaitaha, without a second, the non-dual reality. Evam Omkaraha, Atma Eva. This Om verily is the same as the Atma, the self itself. We can notice that many terminologies are repeated from the verse seven. And, and that means to say that both uh the Atma as well as the. Uh as well as the Amatra Omkar are one and the same. Ya Evam Veda, one who realizes this, Sam Vishati Atmana Atmanam. The self realizes itself through the self. The meaning, one will realize the Puranatvam, which is also called as Moksha. In the last slide, we will see the summary. Where the Omkar is the both transcendental and imminent consciousness principle, principle reflected through the. Three reflective, uh the relative states as well as the absolute state. Hari Om, Shri Gurubhyo Namaha.
Thank you. A bad day, sir, and all the teachers for a wonderful and very absorbing session. Thank you, friends, for your focused participation. While our regular classes on Bhagavad Gita will go on as per schedule. Param Vedanta will be glad to come out with special sessions like this on focused topic, once in a way. And on special occasions like Guru Purnima, Shiva Ratri, etc. It is customary to chant Gayatri mantra after meditation or study of Om. While I chant the mantra, all of you can chant along with me, muting yourselves. With this, the session comes to a close. Hari Om.